EY and I'm a resident of Hilltown Township. I sent an email to the board a little bit earlier this afternoon. And I would like to echo the comments of the two previous constituents. And I'd also like to ask the leadership of the team of the school district to please be respectful and pay attention to the comments so that way they can make decisions and not have a video showing them listening or talking on a phone. That just shows a blatant disrespect for any of these issues. And I think that as the president, I would like to ask you to ask all of the board members to pay particular attention. To help give a name and a face to some of the racist and homophobic remarks, I'm going to read part of my email that I sent to the board. Good evening. My name is Lenny Greeney and I am writing as a proud member of the LGBTQ community and also a resident of the district who is in an interracial marriage. To come across the racist homophobic hateful words of Joan Cullen, who currently serves as vice president of the school board district is disappointing. I am interested in learning more about how the leadership of Penridge School District will be responding to such repulsive words coming from a quote unquote leader of the district who is tasked with representing all members of the community, including residents of color and the LGBT community. We're here and we're part of the community. We're not going away. What makes this even more troubling is that to my understanding Joan Cullen was trained as an educator. What an embarrassment to the profession and to the local community, having an educator serving in a leadership role on the Penridge School Board. Joan Cullen needs to be censored by this board. Joan Cullen needs to be removed from any and all leadership roles representing the Penridge School District community immediately. Joan Cullen needs to resign from her position as board member to allow the district to move forward and heal. Professionally, I also am an educator. I serve as the director of special education with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and we partner with Penridge School District. I struggle with this relationship personally and professionally, knowing that we work to support inclusion for all. People are dying. People are being killed because of ignorance that Ms. Cullen demonstrates, continuing to listen on her phone and not put the phone down and be respectful of the constituents. If she's going to say she's listening into the call because she's having trouble, that's an embarrassment also that should be worked out beforehand. Thank you for listening and I wait to hear what the district is going to do to address such abhorrent behaviors.
Mr. Greeney, I just would like the whole group to make them aware that Ms. Cullen has texted the board to let them know that her computer is having audio issues. And so she's able to watch on her computer, but she's not able to hear. So she has also called into the Zoom video. So thank you for asking a question and not making an assumption in terms of what she was doing. Thank you for your comment.
Hi, comment.
I have a comment.
Ms. Gerhart?
Hi, Tina Gerhart, Bedminster Township.
There's something wrong with the audio.
Oh, is there? Hold on, you know what? Let me switch. I'm watching with my kids. Let me switch over real quick. They're watching on a different one.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I can hear. I believe your audio is fine.
I can hear as well.
You're now muted, Ms. Gerhart.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Tina Gerhart, Bedminster Township. My kids are watching with me. I'm happy to see so many people on. It's been a long time that, you know, I've been trying to make the meetings off and on for several years now. And oftentimes they're empty, so this is very exciting. But I'm going to bring up again what I brought up two years ago. I was wondering if the board has made any progress with a social media policy for board members. We have it for teachers. We have it for students. Most places of employment have it. The one place we do not have a social media policy is for this board. And from the comments today, it seems as though it is very much needed. So I was wondering if there was any policy or any at least talk of writing a policy for that. I just find it, I find that lacking from our district. There should just be a policy. If there's a policy for teachers, there should be a policy for people picking our curriculum. So that's my comment and I look forward to a response.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart.
I have a public comment.
Okay, is it Bedilian?
Bedilian, yeah. I just want, I live in a Percocie borough. I have three children that have graduated from the school district and I have two grandchildren coming up. I just wanted to commend the school district on making some really good financial choices. Though that the school district is in good shape to meet the CDC guidelines that need to be put in place for the kids to go back to school. So I just wanted to commend the board on that. A lot of school districts I've heard from aren't able to do that. And, you know, that's great. And I also just want to thank the board for giving voice to everyone. Everyone's opinion is important, for hearing both sides of the argument, not what's kind of in vogue right now. So I don't want to get specific, but I'm just want to commend the board for your willingness to hear both sides or all sides of an argument. And that's it. Thank you.
I have a public comment.
Ms. Hupka?
Hupka.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I live in Sellersville. My child is due to begin kindergarten soon and I'm very concerned about sending her in a brand new school environment and her being met with mass faces, unnatural distancing, and over sanitization in school. I don't want that for her or for any child. I've worked very hard to keep fear out of my house and to maintain a normal environment for my children. I want my child's school experience to just be just as normal and as fear free. That's what children need. I want normal school. I support a dual enrollment option so that parents can choose to send their children to live in person school or to keep them home for distance learning. As of today, over 240 residents of Penridge have signed a petition saying the same thing. Lastly, I'd like to express my support for VP Joan Cullen. She's an empathetic leader. She's a person of conviction. She truly values all voices. And I know that anyone who imparts anything other than the best intentions on her has not made an honest attempt to know her. I can say that with great confidence. I also don't support censoring dissenting views as a matter of practice in our district. And I'm proud to call Joan a leader in our community. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Sam, please. Is it Eden? Please.
Yeah. One, I have two things. I'd like to thank everybody that mentioned. I'm just learning about the Cullen thing, but I do agree and echo with the other two, three people that there needs to be something stated about racism in our districts. That has to be, and it cannot just be about black history. It needs to be about racism in America because that education is important. But the reason why I really wanted to speak right now is because if we're going to do these schools, change whatever for next year, there needs to be a system in place for difficult children, which I have one. They do not learn well at home. And this has been a nightmare for them. So I just, I'm asking that when we do, whatever happens, that we're cognizant of people, I don't know, hyperactive kids, behavior problems, there's got to be a different, some type of system in place for these kids so we can get, so they can learn. And three, as a nurse for 20 years, I 100% support cleaning and doing the sanitation, anything you need to prevent the spread of COVID because it is not a disease to be reckoned with. I've seen so many deaths in the last two months that I would never support not sanitizing our schools because the benefit of our children's death definitely outweighs asthma attacks. Which I understand that some kids have asthma. Just for both sides of the argument, like somebody had already said, you need, the COVID is serious and I support that, but that's what I want to say.
Thank you very much for your comment.
I have a comment.
I have a.
Dugay, is it?
Oh, yes. Can I go?
Sure. Well, that's it.
Okay, I have a brief comment, partially in response to Kyrie. Kyrie, I grew up in Percocie and I was a graduate of Penridge High School. Let me see, just as a response to the defense of Joan Cullen, I have this tweet right here. If it has already been read, I apologize, but I'll add to this. There's also no systemic sexism, homophobia, et cetera. Those who try to convince you you're being held back by someone else do not have your best interest in mind. They need you to be a victim so they can control you. Break free. The only one holding you back is you. And I think it's very ironic that a school board menu, a school board member at Penridge High School, which is known in the Philadelphia area for its treatment of a student in 2017. I have the Inquirer article right here. A black student who was harassed and called gendered and racial slurs on a daily basis. And the administration, specifically Mr. Schoonover, suggested that she go to alternative school rather than taking disciplinary actions on the students who were harassed to her. So. Excuse me? Was I muted on purpose?
Mr. Dugay, you can be heard.
Okay. All I had to say was if systemic racism and discrimination are not real, then was the treatment of that student at Penridge her own fault? Was it her fault that her high school experience was ruined by racism, which was not handled adequately whatsoever by our school's administration? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is it Ms. Wasserman?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Jotana Wasserman. I'm from Bedminster Township. Sorry, it says Jack. Jack is my oldest. He just graduated. Thank you very much for the very nice celebration that we had at the high school on Thursday. It was great. When Jack was in eighth grade, he went to North Middle School. And one day when we were, I was dropping him off, he saw a Confederate flag in the parking lot of the high school. He was really upset about it. And this was 2015, 2016 school year. I wrote to the principal of the high school, who was Mrs. DeBona at the time, and we had some conversations back and forth about it. It was right after the AME mass shooting in South Carolina. And there were a lot of Confederate flags coming down at the time. But Penridge's response to me was it was the student's First Amendment right to keep that Confederate flag. I would like to propose that the Penridge School District put in the student handbook that no Confederate flags are to be flown or worn on property. I think that this is a very wise move for our own sake. You know, lots of different organizations, including Marine Corps and NASCAR, are making these policies in effect currently. So I would really like the school board to consider this, to add it directly to the student handbook, to make it clear that this symbol of hate is not to be worn or flown on our school property. Thank you.
I have a public comment.
Jerry, is it?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, Bill. Three things very quickly, just to follow up on Ms. Wasserman's comments. The Confederate flag is the flag of treason. It was the battle flag of secessionist states who were traitors to the Union. Secondly, to have a member of the school board claim that there is no systemic homophobia, transphobia, or racism in the Penridge School District is ludicrous and should disqualify Ms. Cullen from her position immediately. And thirdly, the whole idea that. My third point just left me. I'm so sorry.
Okay, point two thoughts.
Okay. If I think of it again, I'll come back at the end. Oh, the cleaning, the cleaning and disinfecting. I remembered my third point. And this was just announced today, I believe, but the representative, one of the representatives from South Carolina, who paraded around the floor of the House of Representatives in Washington DC without a mask, claiming that he was perfectly fine because he was social distancing, has announced today that he is infected with COVID-19 as well as his wife and his child. So clearly, he did not do everything he could to protect his family. And I think we need to not be so foolish as to fall into that same trap. That's it.
Any else would like to make a public comment before we move into the agenda?
I would.
Okay, and it's showing us Heather.
Yeah, that's my wife. I just want to also say that I have two kids. I'm Sellersville, sorry. I have two kids that go to Penridge and I just want it to be known that I do not want any kind of masks or anything like that. And if I have to, I will leave the district over it. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Rachel's phone, yes.
Hi, I've been hearing a lot about the masks and making it sound punishable.
Rachel, can you give us your full name in this?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Rachel Nolte, Bedminster Township. I agree with the gentleman who spoke earlier. I think that we have to trust in science and do the things that are going to keep our kids healthy, especially if we want them to continue to be in a school environment in the fall. The pandemic's not over. And if your kid's not comfortable wearing a mask, I hope that there are options for them to go on virtual school. However, I would like to have my kids be safe. The staff should wear a mask. The kids should wear a mask until it's safe to go to school without them. Secondly, if we're talking about freedom of speech, you do not have the freedom of speech to be hateful and to be homophobic and to be racist. So those kids who fly those flags, I agree with that person earlier. They should not be able to have those at school. It is hate speech. It is hate, incites more hate and causes problems also. And there should be no social media platform as a school board member or as a staff member where you're allowed to be in any way racist, especially if you're serving the community. It's ridiculous. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Nice. Is that your full name and municipality?
Yes, Stephanie Regina, East Rock Hill. Okay, I guess I have two points. One is regards to the fall COVID. I was looking at the survey and kind of assessing the questions a little bit, feeling a little questionable about the idea of asking people what they support and don't support. It seems that simply the safest measure should be taken regardless of what people prefer. Yes, we want to not traumatize our children, but I think we need to accept that this is a traumatizing experience for everyone in the world. And we can't hide them from that. We need to protect them. We need to protect their parents. We need to protect their teachers. That said, I felt that none of the questions reflected what the district is using to weigh, like what kind of science is the district using to weigh what measures will be taken? I mean, there's the possibility that depending on whether the state of emergency is lifted, we don't know what kind of guidelines are going to be set. They may not be requirements, in which case the district has a lot of freedom to essentially not do anything if people were to demand that they want nothing done. They just want normal school. I am hoping that the district is looking at scientific things like viral load and considering what amount of time students can safely spend in a building together in an enclosed space with probably limited ventilation. Each building might even have different ventilation. So some buildings might actually be safer or less safe than other buildings in the district. But the fact is, the longer they are in a building together for how many hours, the more viral load is released simply from breathing the same air. And I hope that that's being considered. So I wanted to put that out there because I felt that that wasn't reflected in the survey at all. And also just to tack on to comments regarding the handling of racism right now, I just want to support all the people who have said that the district does need to step up and kind of let go of this colorblind policy that it seems to have followed. Colorblindness is really kind of color ignorance. It's just trying to ignore a problem that is there. And I also support establishing the Confederate flag as a hate symbol because all of our students of color should be able to feel safe and that symbol absolutely will not make them feel safe. And I believe that's it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment?
I would. I have a comment.
So I see Michelle McCown is muted.
No, I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted now. It's Matthew McCown.
I'm sorry. Would you like to make a public comment?
I would. Matthew McCown, East Rock Hill, Dibler Elementary. We've had three children that have graduated from Penridge. Our latest graduated last week. So we've been in the district a while and I have, my youngest daughter now is going to go to middle school next year. Couple of things that I just wanted to bring up. Obviously, I don't think that anybody's going to feel safe and secure until there's a vaccine. But I think that we need to do everything possible to make sure that we limit the possibility of transmission of this disease at our school level. Not only that, because you also then limit the possibility of transmission at a home level with older adults, people with other, you know, immune systems that are compromised at home, undisabled. So for me, it's, you know, it's kind of like, you know, I'm trying to avoid everything at a high cost. So I think that it is, you know, I think that we do need to keep everything sanitized. I think that everybody should wear masks, including the teachers, students, depending on how we are going to go back to school, whether or not we're going to be there full time, whether or not we're going to be part time. But I do think that while they're at school, we need to do everything that we can to not, to make sure that we're not, you know, enhancing the possibility of, you know, spreading this virus or this disease throughout our schools. Other than that, honestly, I have known about Joan Cullen for a while. I have seen the posts that she's put up on Facebook, social media. I honestly believe that she should be, she should resign immediately from her position based on her beliefs in the world that we live in today. It just doesn't mix with, you know, what we should be doing as a school district or as a human being. So I do think that call for resignation for Joan Cullen should happen immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to make a public comment?
Hi. I have something to say.
Okay. Is it, is Monty?
It's Janelle Montigny. I have two children entering second and fourth at Siler Elementary. And I have a couple of topics. One, I do support banning the Confederate flag. I support increasing our anti-racism education in our schools. But back to returning to school in the fall, I support science. I'm a pharmacist. Everything I think about and do is based on science. And I feel like the two option system is what we need to go with. If you have pre-existing health conditions and you're scared and you want to stay home, that's fine. But the science tells me that children that are at very, very, very minimal risk with this disease, less than the actual flu. There's no, in fact, putting masks on children is a higher risk. And I've looked at studies. I've looked at data. Putting masks on our children for 78 hours a day is absurd. They have, I told my pediatrician's office that they've had zero significant cases there and they're extremely busy. We should not be having our children wear masks, breathing all the carbon dioxide, re-breathing. Plus on top of that, small children, elementary school children are going to be touching their masks, getting germs on their fingers. They're going to be, it's going to be pointless to have these masks on these children's faces. And then on top of the other social things, that the first kindergarten, first graders, emotional cues they take from smiles and expressions. I just think it's, it's, there's no medical need to do this to our children, to have a two option system where if you have family members that are at risk, fine. You could do the homeschool option. If you don't have family members at risk and you feel comfortable sending your children, you could do that. If your children want to wear masks, go ahead. But for the majority of us that do not want our children wearing masks, there's already a petition going around that has over, I think, 240 or 250 signatures of people that don't want their children wearing masks all day. I mean, these small children, especially in elementary school, they're not going to do this. They're going to be touching the masks, taking them off, playing with the masks. I just think the whole thing is crazy. And the numbers don't support it. The numbers do not support it. There's very, very minute data showing any problems with children. So to do this to our children is ridiculous. So I hope and pray every day, I will take my children out of school if this is what it comes to. My children are not wearing masks seven hours a day, five days a week. So I believe it. And one more thing, the World Health Organization released a statement a few weeks ago saying that they didn't recommend, they only recommend wearing masks for healthy people unless you're in contact with COVID positive patients. That's the World Health Organization. They released a statement saying that unless you're dealing with COVID positive patients, they don't recommend healthy people wearing masks. So that's, that's my perspective. I feel like giving everyone the option to homeschool or go to school, wear masks or don't wear masks. But that's your prerogative. If you want to stay home, that's fine. Don't punish everyone else. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you. Please consider that. Thank you.
I see Christina's other phone is unmuted. Christina, are you there? Okay. Julie Wallace, your phone's unmuted. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. I was actually really going to echo a lot of what Janelle just mentioned as well. I am a nurse for 12 years in the emergency room. I believe that cloth masking really is a very false sense of security and a really horrible visual for our children. I do not want them masked in any way, shape, or form. These cloth masks are not going to be washed by their family members every day. I can guarantee you that. They will be dropped on the floor and picked up. Then our children will have all those germs all over their hands and then they'll be all over the school. I think it is a highly, highly increased infection risk by having these small children try and wear masks. Plus your teachers are going to become mask police. Billy, pick up your mask off the floor. Billy, don't slingshot your mask across. Don't hit your mask. Don't hit your neighbor with your mask. It's, I think we need to really think very critically about the practicality of that. And that will, and that's just not even elementary. Like, like I have, you know, I have a middle school boy that will be going into sixth grade. I can guarantee you, he's a really good kid, but he's not going to appropriately wear a mask for seven hours a day. There is zero chance of that. So I absolutely do not want my children masked in any way, shape, or form. And I also support the dual option that we can send our children to school full time. Normally, I want normal recess, normal lunch. I want them to have the social interaction with their friends, with their teachers. Any folks who are, who would rather mask their children, absolutely have that right. The teachers should have that right. If they would like to wear a mask, that's fine. I have no problem with that. The number one best thing that we can do is increase the hand washing for our children. Make sure they're washing their hands regularly. That is the best method of infection control. That's really the very method I used for years in the room to prevent between myself and. I would support as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Dallas, I see you're unmuted. Ms. Dallas? Okay. Anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I would. This is Ruth Fields.
Ruth Fields, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Fields. I am a member of the Hilltown Township. My son goes to Grass Elementary. I will have another son coming into the Penridge School District and one immediately afterwards. And I have to say, I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the statements that many have made regarding Joan Cullen, but I was very appalled, very hurt, shaken, called my husband about this because as a person that is sitting on the board, a person that is supposedly looking over the curriculum of our students, a person that's supposedly saying that she cares about our students, and to write such appalling, appalling things about racism, sexism, homophobia, how are we supposed to trust? And I've written the school board many a times. How are we supposed to trust that the curriculum is going to be changed? How are we supposed to trust that the curriculum is going to be diverse? How are we supposed to trust our kids in your hands? So if you do not get this woman, Joan Cullen, off the board, we will not trust the school district and we will continue to fight and be on this call every time until you make this change. Get her off the board.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Anyone else like to make a comment? I see.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, who do we have?
My name is Bethany Schwendy. We live in Percasie Borough, but our children have gone through and are going through Sellersville Elementary and Central Middle. And I am a teacher. I do not teach in Pen Ridge School District. I teach in a private school and I teach pre-K through eighth grade as a music teacher and also teach second grade math. And I will say that from the teacher's perspective, as teachers have been doing through this entire unprecedented crisis, we are very aware of the challenges of having safety protocol in our classrooms. That is nothing new. Now, this level of safety protocol, absolutely. And you can be sure that teachers are going to take this on and do their very best to make sure that students, staff, faculty can be in school and be safe. That being said, masks are an issue of mitigation. I fully understand that children are going to be messing with masks. I 100% know that to be true. We have seen it with our own children. However, this is something that we will need to learn. It is something that teachers are going to take on and teach. As far as, I have children, two children with IEPs and absolute, absolutely social cues are huge for them. They are young, they are learning. And even middle schoolers, adolescents need that as well. However, I think it is important to remember that this is part of what teachers have been taking on this whole time. We're going to find ways to do it. And we can do it with planned distant learning. We can do it with a hybrid model. We are going to have to do it. It's in this for the long term since we are still finding new things about this virus. And it is wonderful that children are not highly affected negatively by this virus so far. However, this is not just about our children. This is about our community. And so when you have the teachers going in, think about how many teachers are in a risk group or have autoimmune disorders. We need to keep them safe as well. And you cannot give somebody, a teacher, a binary choice to stay in or to leave if they're not comfortable. So I think it is worth considering a hybrid model. I also think that saying, you choose to send your kids to school like with increased hand washing, but no masks or I'm leaving, or to say you do distance learning if you don't like it, that is an incredibly nearsighted, narrow-minded choice. That's coming from a place of privilege. There are people in our community that somewhere in the middle may be the best option and that is valid too. So I do appreciate the fact that we did have those three choices. Obviously, things are not worked out right now, but teachers are working on it. I also want to say, thank you for the words against Joan Cullen for not being our president.
I'm sorry, ma'am, this is a sister. You've, you've run a little bit over three minutes and everyone's been very patient and kind and I'm, I hate to interrupt you, but I apologize. To keep it fair for everyone, I'm going to have to ask you to, to see.
Understood. I'm done.
Thank you for your.
Sorry.
I'd like to speak.
Okay, I see Bob and Vicky. I'm sorry, Mr. Hogan. I recognize Bob and Vicky. You, would you like to make a comment? Bob, you're muted. You on mute, Bob?
You're talking to the Sellers, right? Not to me?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Hogan. All right. Mr. Seller, please unmute your computer. Okay.
How about that? You good?
There you go. Now you're, now you're live. Please give us your name and municipality.
Sure. Bob and Vicky Sellers from East Rock Hill.
Okay.
So, um, what I do really, what I really wanted to say before this meeting started was I read an article about how prepared Pen Ridge was with distributing laptops. And I really just wanted to share a positive comment about, thank you very much for doing that. From my understanding, the students of Pen Ridge were, had a head start by receiving these laptops which from, that they've always have had in the last years. So I just really wanted to thank the board and, and thank you. But as I'm listening to the discussion, I know a little bit about all the sensitivities that are going on right now. But I, I do, I do want to let people know. I picked up the, I picked up hearing about the Confederate flag. Personally, I don't like the Confederate flag. But I do want to share a story with you that I've lived in this area since the eighties and my wife and her family since the fifties. And I always had put an American flag and I normally put the American flag with God Bless America. And I just want to let you know, this is the first time in the last three weeks that someone vandalized it. And it was something, it's, in my family, we're very patriotic and it was hurtful. And I wanted to share that. And as far as the board's concerned, I, I support the board. The reason I supported the board was because of how they were fiscally sound and how they were able to use the money wisely to not continue to borrow for capital investments. And that was, I truly appreciate that. As it relates to what I'm hearing tonight, I, I have to tell you, this, this sounds like a very political meeting and the lines are so evident to me. And as far as Joan Cullen is concerned, I know you probably value free speech because you are definitely getting orchestrated bullying tonight. So I just wanted to share my, my opinions and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan, do you want to make a public comment?
Yes, thank you. Joshua Hogan from West Rock Hill Township. Before I start, I want to express that Joan Cullen has my full support. I know her to be an upstanding member of the community. I'd also like to point out that her tweet was in direct support of something that a black man had tweeted. She was retweeting a black man. Simply put, this board has done a fabulous job for our district and community and I support them 100%. Now, I'd like to address the board about the pandemic. In consideration of the fact that we adults must at all times make decisions that are in the best interests of our children and their well-being, I'm asking you to do your elected duty and protect the students of Pen, Pen Ridge from the madness that's swept across so many feeble minds in our society. I urge you to reject any idea of any Pen Ridge student of any age being forced to wear a mask against their will or against the will of their parents. I also urge you to give teachers the freedom to choose whether or not they will wear a mask and to strongly consider how an entire school full of masked adults will improperly warp a young child's mind away from what is normal and good and healthy and instead turn that child towards fear, paranoia, anxiety and stress. They clearly already have plenty of that in today's crazy world as this board meeting is evidence. They don't need us to add anymore. I also urge you to consider the long-term effects that over sanitation will have on kids. Kids are by design very dirty creatures. They have an immune system built to handle that. They are practically unaffected by SARS-CoV-2. It's my sincere opinion as a proud parent of three very robust and healthy children that our children absolutely should not be shuttered away from all possible germs just to keep them away from coronavirus. Yes, the virus can be rough on the elderly or on the unhealthy, but we as a society should not make children pay for that. It's critical that we keep our children as healthy and strong as possible. The way we do that is providing them with exposure to normal life, which includes human contact, exercise, sunlight, and of course, the occasional germs that their bodies are so robustly designed to handle. If we remove their ability to maintain a strong immune system, more of them will become sick with basic illness such as influenza as the winter months go by. Lastly, I urge you to consider a two-solution approach which would simultaneously provide fully normal schools for those who are ready and also provide fully virtual cyber schools for those who aren't. I can guarantee you that a solution of abnormal schooling without any viable option for normalcy will lead to significant enrollment in cyber charter. The default should not be to bow down to those who are afraid. The default should be to stand proud and strong and to show those living in fear that this too shall pass.
Thank you for your comments. So ladies and gentlemen, it is now 10:08. We have about nine minutes left. It's time we're going to ask, I'd ask you to keep the comments brief and there will be another comment period at the end of this meeting. So at 8 o'clock, we're going to move into the agenda. We're not ignoring you. We just have a limit on the comment period so that we can get through the agenda this evening. So I see Megan is unmuted.
Yes, that's me. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Megan Brady. I have four kids in the district, three in middle, three in elementary, one in middle school. I'm active in the schools and in the community and I appreciate the time to speak tonight. I'll keep it brief. I just want to say the tweet from Joan Cullen was extremely upsetting to me, embarrassing to me. I'm a graduate of Pen Ridge as well as, like I said, having four kids that go through the school here. And I've, there are wonderful things about Pen Ridge and there are some things that are great. Unfortunately, this is completely unacceptable and embarrassing. There is systematic racism, sexism, homophobia in the district. It is there. Maybe it doesn't affect her. So that's why she's putting something like that out there, but it is here and it does affect others. So I'm not, I'm not sure that she should have that platform to be putting things like that. Somebody mentioned something about this being political. I think that she made it political when she posts things like this. So I don't think that she should have a platform to be dealing so. Also, as far as, and I do think that she should just resign. This is embarrassing at this point. Also, as far as the COVID, I certainly would love to have my kids back in school in the fall. And like some people have said, have it be a normal situation for them. Unfortunately, the district's hands are tied somewhat. I mean, this isn't a normal situation. And no matter what happens, you're going to have some people upset either way. So I don't envy the position that the school district has and, and I appreciate the, the lengths of, of discussion and agony over making these decisions. I just want to say that I, I do believe wholeheartedly in what Bethany said, that there's got to be some other way. It can't just be, oh, you, I don't want my kid to wear a mask, so I'm going to go to school and everything's going to be normal. I don't think that that's fair to say because maybe kids are not affected by this. But there are other people in the community besides the kids and kids pass germs and other things. So I'm no scientist, I'm no pharmacist, I'm not a nurse, I'm not in the medical profession, but I do strongly believe that there's got to be some way that we can meet in the middle somewhere. And, and if it's, you know, wear a mask, it's wear a mask or, you know, whatever. These are not normal times and I don't think that things are going to be normal or should be expected to be normal. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township. I just wanted to address, first of all, the the comment that you made earlier. There's 158 people on this call. And, um, you know, as elected officials, you guys have a responsibility to listen to them. So, you know, ending the public comment period early is, 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 uh, it's unheard of. So I don't think that's even appropriate. And I think that Dr. Bolton should weigh in here, as should Mr. Miller.
I will weigh in, Mr. Foster, and I will hold your time while I do so. The policy, Policy 903 makes very clear that there are, there's a 60-minute period to speak on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, an additional period of time, up to 60 minutes, to speak on any items that a qualified person can speak on. The board has allowed people to go beyond the agenda items limitation on the first period of speaking so that people can be heard. I appreciate what you're saying, but the board does have rules which are published and are clear for everyone. So I think the board is doing its very best to get everyone's comments in and still do the business of the board that has to be, has to be taken care of. So I want to be clear that the board is not acting in any arbitrary way or any way that's not consistent with the the rules that are set forth by the board. I'm going to resume your time, Mr. Foster. I, I pause at the time.
I would also mention that the 2017 Activities Committee meeting in March was allowed to run longer than a one-hour comment period. So I think it's convenient that you guys have chosen this one to cut to 60 minutes. That being said, 159 participants now that I think we have an obligation to perform. That being said, you know, I haven't said much publicly in the last, you know, two or three weeks. I've just been listening to, you know, coworkers, friends, family members about, you know, some really horrific instances of racism that I've, that I've heard of, not just in this community, but also, you know, in my networks outside this community. And, you know, it's really concerning. And then I've heard instances, I've heard students speak publicly in front of their peers, Pen Ridge students, about racist incidents in elementary school, in the high school, in the community. And then, you know, discovering that essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, a sitting board member essentially has said, you know what, that doesn't really exist and people just need to buck up and toughen up. And I think that's just disgraceful. And I'm really interested what the other board members have to say about that. You know, I know this is not your time to respond, but I'm going to pay really close attention. I think everybody on this call should also as to what the other eight board members say in regards to Mrs. Cullen's statements. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, Ms. Brady?
Bradley, yes. Hi, I'm Lauren Bradley and I'm in Bedminster Township. I have two students at the elementary level and one in high school. And I wrote to the district today about Ms. Cullen's tweets and basically, it, the, the, her tweets about the non-existence of systemic oppression is just one of many appalling tweets that Ms. Cullen has made in recent years. And I did receive a response from her, which I initially appreciated. But I realized then that it was just a canned response that she had sent to multiple people. And in her response to me, Ms. Cullen stated that systemic oppression is a matter of opinion, which is absolutely wrong. And I think this attitude of ignorance towards very real problems in this country has no place in the district. And I think Ms. Cullen should resign. And I also think that, you know, we're sitting here talking about protecting students from, from COVID and from, you know, the, the virus. But who's, who's standing up for students of color and, and, or, or minority students in this district? Especially when someone sitting on the board has such appalling views. I think she should resign.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Kraus, it is now 8 o'clock. It is, the chair's prerogative. We will have another comment period at the end of this meeting, which I know the chair will allow people to speak. We do have an agenda to get through. And it's consistent with Rule 903, Policy 903, to start the meeting now and then take comment at the second comment period. So I mentioned that for you to make the decision on how you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think I'll, I'll take one more comment before we move on, if that's okay with everyone. Is there one?
I'll speak. Mr. Kraus, I'll speak. Lee Rush.
Mr. Rush, how are you?
Lee Rush, Percasie. Now, Mr. Miller, of course, is quite accurate around policy. And I think that it's an important decision that you're about to make as chair of the board, or Mr. Kraus, I'm sorry. Dissent, dissent is obviously the healthiest thing that our constitution protects and the discretion that you hold as chair is a pretty critical position. And, you know, you know as well as I have been to hundreds of meetings, like some other folks on this call. We've been to many meetings over decades. And this is a pretty, pretty important time, you know, in our country, our, our little tiny district here in Pen Ridge. So I encourage you to, to make an exception tonight and just, you know, let things So I encourage you to, to make an exception tonight and just, you know, let things unfold. If people have to leave, if people can wait till the end of the meeting, you know what's going to happen. If you cut off public comment now, a lot of people are going to, you know, take, you know, take themselves out of the meeting, perhaps come back. So I just think that, you know, whatever people's opinions are, this is the place to, to just listen to the community. We always talk about wanting more engagement and people showed up tonight. So I really think that the wise move would be just open it up for another half hour, forty minutes, see where things go. And then, yeah, you got to get to your business tonight, but, but give it some time. I think if you cut off this conversation now, it'll send a really, it'll send a, it'll send a message. And I encourage you just to leave it open a little bit. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. And I think you make perfect points here. So in the interest of letting this comment period extend, I'll, I'm going to extend it for another thirty minutes. Hopefully, everybody will have their, that wants to. So thank you for that, Mr. Rush. Anybody else would like to make a comment?
I have a comment.
Okay, Monique?
Yes, my name is Monique Jones. I live in Percasie Borough. I am a nineteen ninety-six graduate of Pen Ridge and I currently have two students that will both be in middle school next year. And Joan Cullen needs to resign. And if she chooses not to resign, the other board members and Dr. Bolton, you need to call for her resignation. To have someone as a vice president that overlooks our children's curriculum, who cannot understand that there is still racism of people of color, of people with different genders, of people with different socioeconomic backgrounds? How can anyone have faith in someone to look over curriculum and change your curriculum to meet the needs of what our children or our population is showing us? There's no question that this woman should no longer have a place on this board. I've written to each board member two times within the last two weeks. And unfortunately, the vast majority of you chose not to respond to a simple email detailing some of the concerns that I've had myself as a high school graduate of Pen Ridge, as a member of this community, the racism that I've experienced, and now that's being passed down to my children. The fact that you're voted in to be a voice of these people, that you can't take five minutes to simply acknowledge receipt of an email, even if you don't have answers. You want us to go out and vote for you and support you, yet you can't take five minutes to respond to an email. All of you, absolutely owe everyone that has emailed you that you have not responded to, an apology. I want to know what this board has planned to address the racial disparities that are happening in our community. Our curriculum clearly needs to be changed. Our staff clearly needs to be educated and learn how to appropriately handle when children are being called out of their names by their peers and by their teachers. Because when I was in high school, I had a teacher who currently still teaches in this district who refused to call me by my name. He had a different name that he preferred to call me. And that teacher was never reprimanded and continues to teach to this day. And my daughter has this person as a teacher. So I need to know, what are you going to do to handle all of these racial disparities in this district? It needs to happen immediately. I understand COVID-19 is a major concern, but racism has been happening in this district far too long and you have sat way too quiet and done absolutely nothing to address it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
I would.
Okay, Ms. Moore, Stuart Moore?
Hi, my name is Jody Stuart Moore and I'm a Pen Ridge resident. I live in Percasie Borough. And with regards to structural racism and curriculum, I want to speak that schools have a responsibility to be a place of comprehensive and inclusive learning. And I, if structural racism is something we're going to address, we need to address it within the structure and the curriculum of Pen Ridge to kind of ensure that all of our students are fully supported. And so I do believe in structural racism and so I have specific questions. I'm happy to email them to you as well because there's a number of them. But the questions are, number one, where can we find a complete list of approved reading texts for English class? Two, how many teachers of color are on staff? Three, what resources exist for teachers and staff who wish to explore issues of diversity? Four, how do you handle situations where Pen Ridge staff use social media to encourage violence against protesters, which has happened in the past month? Or make statements that are available to the public that are hurtful to children or parents within our school district? Five, do you have a list of in-service and trainings that have been offered over the last several years and what specific topics have been covered? Six, what specific courses and training do members of the school board have on issues of race and diversity? Seven, what social studies courses are being offered outside the European and North American context? And eight, final question, is there currently a task force or committee with a specific charge of doing anti-racism, anti-oppression, or diversity work within the school district? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the comment, Ms. Moore.
Mr. Kraus, before you move on, I would simply ask the speaker to make sure that she does email those questions to Dr. Bolton so that he has an opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Miller. Is there someone else who would like to make a comment?
Yes, I would.
Okay, please, Mr. Kennedy?
My name's Emily Guy. I'm in East Rock Hill Township. I'd like to thank the board initially for its fiscal responsibility and thank those who have been respectful of others' opinions. I want to say that I support free speech for everybody on all sides. A little dismayed at the acceptance and support of the bullying responses to some of Ms. Collins' views. There's a Google Doc on one of the Facebook pages entitled, quote, "Joan Cullen harassment." Then it, that includes screenshots of her asking for a young man to get some supportive help. And it's all been twisted and turned around. And it's a little unsettling to feel that that kind of bullying response is supported on a widespread level. And if people want her out, they need to vote her out and not bully her out. So I want to just say that I support free speech for everybody. And I'm also against requiring masks for school and students, for students and staff in the fall. That's all.
Hello? Any comments?
I have a comment. Samantha Yothers, I'm Hilltown Township. I'm also a twenty seventeen Pen Ridge graduate. Last week, we had protests. I know a lot of people knew about it. And it was a time for students who went to Pen Ridge to just share their personal experiences that they've gone through. For some of the white students at Pen Ridge to share things that they've witnessed or things that they've seen their friends deal with at Pen Ridge, which, in my case, was under the previous administration of Dr. Radigan and Ms. DeBona at Pen Ridge High School. However, I also have siblings who are class of twenty twenty-one, who are coming up. And there have been some incidences that have taken place at the school. For example, some stuff was stolen out of the locker room during football season last year. And the assistant principal called in all these students of color and not a single white student was called in during that time. Even though those students who had stuff taken knew that it was most likely one specific student. However, nobody wants to be the snitch when you're seventeen years old. So I guess my comment would be that, what is the board doing to prevent situations like that from happening again? How are your administrators being held accountable when situations like that happen? And so I guess the question that would be asked back to me would be, well, did, was this reported? And what I can say is, my senior year, we did send an email to the principal and to the school board when there was a similar incident where a black student was asking my mom for a ride home. And a security officer came up and said to that student, are you bothering her? Which we took to be racial profiling, especially with this specific student, because this had happened multiple times with him and his group of friends who are also black. We made a report, we were basically told not, that nothing would be happening to the security officer and that this wasn't because of that. And that if we wanted to take it up with someone else, you know, we would have to, you know, take it up with someone who wasn't part of the school district. So I guess my question is, as, you know, new board members, most of you, and as a new administration, what is being done to prevent situations like that? What are the responses that are being given to students and parents when they come to you with these issues? And just what type of policies are being enacted where students are being educated about these things that are going on in their world? Because systemic racism, systemic homophobia, systemic sexism are facts that have been proven in history. They're not an opinion. And to say that they are an opinion is a privilege that you have because you haven't been affected by them. So I'm just asking what the school district will be changing in the future to educate their students.
Thank you, Ms. Yowicz.
I'd like to make a comment.
And, and who is, who might be the one?
You're speaking to J. Jones.
Okay.
Percasie Borough.
Yes, sir.
Since we are on the subject of education and curriculum, I'd like to share a brief story. You know, I am a firm believer that, you know, education is the great equalizer. However, when kids are not given a proper education, like ours are not at Pen Ridge School District, that creates a major problem. One of my daughters were told that no pharaohs in Egypt were black. Her teacher completely ignored the Twenty-Fifth Dynasty, which, by the way, were called the Nubian Pharaohs. Does the term Nubian have anything to do with European? Examples like this are the reasons why we have such issues in this country and in our community. The good news is, Pen Ridge is up for curriculum review, I believe, this year. I am asking you, I am begging you for the sake of our children in this community and their futures, to give them a fair and true education. That is not political. That is their right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
I would like to comment.
Um, Kiara?
East Rock Hill. I'm an alumni of Pen Ridge, as well as have siblings and nieces and nephews in the school district. I just wanted to say that in this moment in history, it is very obvious that there are opportunities for change that are being pushed from all sides of any political spectrum. We are in a moment of radical change that we, that aims to take a look at the systematic racism and disadvantages that people have faced for thousands and thousands of years. It is indeed a privilege to be able to ignore such things, which has been done at Pen Ridge for so long. Pen Ridge prides itself as being a high-standing institution that teaches fairness and equality and it states diversity on its page, but it does not actually teach those things, which I can attest to through my time being in Pen Ridge for my entire twelve years of education. And I think that this movement is such a great opportunity and it would be quite a shame if the school board and if Pen Ridge did not take this opportunity to make a change in the curriculum as they have the opportunity to do so right now. So I just hope that the school board takes this opportunity to sit and listen and learn and use our privilege as a very white community to teach our children fairness and equality as it should be taught. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Hey, I'm not hearing anybody. At this time, I'm going to move into the agenda. Well, thank you for all the public comments. President's report. So this is, this is my report. We're all appalled and saddened by the brutal events in Minneapolis and Atlanta. They led to the tragic, senseless deaths of George Floyd and Rashad Brooks. No human being deserves to be treated in such a manner. I watched the memorial service for Mr. Floyd on June fourth and was especially moved by the passionate and emotional speech given by Mr. Floyd's brother Rodney, who said, "We didn't have much growing up, but we had a house full of love." The Declaration of Independence reminds us, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is clear, there's much work to be done on a local and national level to implement meaningful change such that all people are valued and viewed as equal in all aspects. Pen Ridge community is a loving, caring community who welcomes all people of all colors, creeds, and sexual orientation with open arms. These open arms extend to our schools, the board, the administration, educators, and support staff. I have asked Dr. Bolton to share again the work of the Diversity and Equity Working Group in his superintendent's report. That group will expand to include parents and students in the fall and will continue to develop initiatives to ensure our policies and curriculum continue to provide a loving, supportive, and safe environment for every Pen Ridge student to reach and achieve their full potential. Dr. Bolton?
Mr. Kraus, thank you for the opportunity. I'm so appreciative of the number of community members who gathered tonight and wanted to take an opportunity to share some of the work that we've outlined through the District's Diversity and Equity Work Group. We shared last week, but it was a much smaller group. And so it does address some of the questions, not all of the questions, but some of the questions that were asked tonight. So as you referenced, Mr. Kraus, the District's Diversity and Equity Work Group began in the fall of two thousand eighteen. It began my first year as superintendent and was an outgrowth of our most recent comprehensive planning. And it is this group that will continue to leave our, lead our initiatives through the summer and into next year and beyond. This group has already delivered multiple diversity trainings to all administrators. It has planned a training in November for all professional and support staff. It has discussed educational opportunities for our students. It has investigated our discipline data for both gender and racial discrepancies. It has looked to increase the diversity of candidates that are considered for all positions and has examined our curriculum for diversity of content, characters, and authors. I've held multiple conversations over the last two weeks and have continued to say that we are proud of this work, but understand that the work is not finished. We will expand this work group, as Mr. Kraus said, to include student and parent participation as we move into next year and should have done that previously to now. We will continue to improve through listening to and learning from the input and ideas of all members of the Pen Ridge community. One example is here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now I'd like to turn and say a few words to the class of twenty twenty. You did it. It is bittersweet to say that because I know many of you are disappointed. This is not the graduation you imagined. You did not get to experience several classic high school experiences. You miss out on graduating alongside your friends. You miss out on senior prom. You miss out on senior skip day and you miss out on playing jackball. It is, it is easy to be disappointed with all these changes, cancellations, and delays. However, I want to remind you of all the accomplishments of this class that make you stand out. You are among the first classes to have laptops as part of your entire high school education. You are the first class to learn remotely. You are the first class to take AP exams online. This class graduated the earliest in the school year of any class. And you are the first class to walk across the stage into high school building. This class is truly full of trailblazers, innovators, team players, and you've displayed a unique ability to overcome adversity and the challenges you faced. It is this spirit that will allow you to tackle and overcome any challenge in the future. Whether you begin working, head off to college, join the military, or whatever path you have chosen, take this spirit with you. After seeing you tackle challenge after challenge together, I am confident you will be able to overcome anything you may face in the future. Become informed and engaged in your community. Bring not only your concerns, but also your ideas. And together, the Pen Ridge community... And together, the Penridge community will continue to grow and be the loving, caring community we all love. Be kind. Always remain Penridge proud. Good luck and congratulations to class of 2020. Dr. Bolton, that's the end of my president's report. I'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Mr. Kraus, thank you. I want to add my congratulations, obviously, to the Penridge class of 2020. Um, I know that lost remaining congratulations to Jack. Um, I feel like there was one other graduate on the phone call, and I apologize for not writing it down. But a congratulations to all of you and connections to any seniors. The past three months were not the way that anyone intended it to end. But one good thing is it did force all of us involved to find creative ways to hold on to not just the many traditions that normally happen at the end of a senior year, but also create additional celebrations for the class. Before I share some of those images, I want to publicly thank Dr. Cashman, the high school principal, Mr. Lebowski, the house principal for the class of 2020, Ms. Cuthbert and Mr. Barron, their guidance counselors, as well as Ms. O'Brien and Mrs. Baker, their class advisors. These were some of the adults and individuals who worked tirelessly on behalf of our seniors. I've asked Ms. Cooper if she would put together and share a brief video of some of the events over the past two weeks so that you can just uh, enjoy some of the sights and the sounds of the last two weeks. So Ms. Miller, if you could give Ms. Cooper her ability to share her screen. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Cooper, thank you for putting that together. I hope that you could see some of the wonderful events that were held on, on behalf of the class of 2020. As one school year comes to a close, um, obviously, many families and even some tonight are asking about our planning for school in the fall. Um, as I've reminded the community multiple times, I continue to meet twice a week with representatives from all of the 13 school districts as well as the three um, Centers for Technical Education and the Intermediate Unit across Bucks County. We also meet weekly with representatives from the state and county health departments. And we are working together to develop health, safety, and instructional plans that will be required by the state for the fall. We have created a planning team that will be working on various possibilities for the fall. We all hope for a full return to face-to-face instruction that would include options for families who are not comfortable with that. But in Penridge, we will need to be prepared for any changes that might require either a blended model or full virtual instruction. At this point, as some speakers said tonight, we just have no way to know exactly what August and September will bring, let alone November and December, and we need to prepare for all of those options. The district is fully committed to a full return to face-to-face instruction for those families. And my hope is that we will be able to do that and that the year will go beautifully. As most of you know, there are currently surveys that are being completed by both parents and staff, two separate surveys. And that will provide important information from our community regarding their thoughts on the fall. Um, the next update that you'll receive from me will be in either late June or early July as that group has had an opportunity to, the work group has had an opportunity to interact with survey information, as well as we are expecting uh, any day now, uh, guidance from the Bucks County Health Department with some specifics in terms of what the fall can look like. That obviously then will allow us to, to plan for specifically what our classrooms can do and how we can accommodate all of our students. So you'll continue to receive updates uh, both through emails directly from me as well as through our social media and, and website for those of you who do not have children currently in this system. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kraus. That is the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. Um, we'll move into the consent calendar. And with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar uh, items listed as A through I.
Second it.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Rice. Any questions or concerns from board members?
Mr. Kraus, I just want to clarify two items. One, if you've looked um, for, at the personnel report, uh, you will see that we have summer helpers that are hired. Um, and they are at different rates, even though they are side-by-side in the report. So I just wanted to clarify for board members as well as the community, our summer helpers um, are hired based on age. There's one rate for students who are currently in high school and another rate for high school graduates, as well as longevity. Students who are working with us for multiple years do receive an increase over the previous year. I would also like to remind the community that voting will look a little different in a virtual format. Uh, instead of having, uh, in tonight, we have eight board members here. Instead of having eight yeses, Mr. Kraus will ask for any noes or extensions. Uh, that is generally just to uh, limit the chatter and the over-talking uh, of the board. So thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton, and for the clarification. Um, so I have a motion that was seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or concerns from board members? Hearing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, motion passes eight zero. Moving on to the committee reports, Mrs. Walters' activities. Mrs. Walters on the line. We can't hear you, Mrs. Walters. Okay. All right. Um, so in light of Mrs. Walters, uh, can you all still hear me? Okay, all right. Um, I will fill in for Mrs. Walters and uh, go through the committee report. Um, the committee did meet on Ju- June 8th, and uh, there is a motion to approve the amended 2019-2020 School District Calendar. The changes in this calendar are reflective of the days which we were closed right, right before the governor closed the schools. So um, there's a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or concerns from board members? Okay, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, motion passes eight zero. And the next uh, Activities Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 3rd. Next committee, Mrs. Venus Clemmons, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The, I'll make a motion to approve the final general fund budget.
Second it.
Okay, motion seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or concerns from board members?
I believe that this should be done as a roll call vote, Mr. Kraus.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, okay, so with that, um...
Mr. Kraus, uh, before the vote, I just want to publicly thank uh, Mr. Daubert and the building administrators and the board for the development of this budget. It is an uncertain financial time uh, coming out of COVID and what that will look like financially uh, across our district as well as the entire country. And it is a tribute to the financial um, stability that, that this board and Mr. Daubert's department have established that we are able to offer for the second consecutive year a balanced, no-tax-increase budget um, in the Penridge community. So I just wanted to congratulate all that was involved. Um, that was not a small task to get that done, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. I will echo that sentiment to the um, to the administration, yourself, and, and Mr. Daubert for your leadership in getting this done. It is truly um, an uncertain time. And um, I'm very thankful for the work that each of you have done to bring this budget forward. So uh, with that, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Chenoweth, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Bennis Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan? Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walters?
That was a yes, Mrs. Chenoweth. She's having technical difficulties. She gives a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Motion passes eight zero. Okay, Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to approve levying taxes, which include the 1% earned income tax, half a percent real estate transfer tax, and $5 local services tax. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Miller, this also needs to be a roll call vote, correct?
I was gonna say, get ready, Mrs. Chenoweth.
Yes. Okay, I'll second that motion. Um, so motion seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or concerns by board members? Seeing none, Mrs. Chenoweth, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Bennis Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Dolan's absent. Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yeah.
Mr. Rice?
Yeah, yes.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walters?
So, definitely yes from her. So motion passes eight zero. Um, Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution.
Second.
There you go, motion seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or concerns by board members? Seeing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, we'll be checked with Mrs. Walters. Are you opposed or abstaining? You're good, okay. Passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
And next, I'll make a motion to set the installment dates of August 31st, October 31st, and December 15th, 2020.
Second it. Go ahead, Bill.
Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Um, questions or concerns from board members? Okay, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, Mrs. Walters? You're good, yeah, okay. Motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the commitment of funds A through C for year ending 2019-2020.
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Cormac. Um, questions or concerns from board members? Hearing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, Mrs. Walters? Good job, all right. Motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve renewal quotes A through G presented by Willis Towers Watson.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Um, questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, Mrs. Walters? You're good, all right, thank you. Motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
I'll make a motion to approve contact, contracts A through R.
A second.
Go ahead, Joan.
Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Questions or concerns from board members? Okay, anybody opposed or abstaining? Mrs. Walters? You're good, thank you. Motion passes eight zero.
Mr. Kraus, I apologize again. I just want, uh, just for the community's sake, I just want to let everyone know that as we've been negotiating contracts for the fall into next school year, uh, we have made sure we've included uh, clauses so that if the event does not happen or it is changed in any way, the district will not be responsible for the funds being expensed. So that is one of the changes we obviously made going into next year to make sure that our contracts happen. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, that's an important clarification. So, okay. So, questions or concerns from board members? None? Would we vote on this, guys? Nope, anybody abstaining or opposed? Seeing none, Mrs. Walters, looking for your thumbs up. Hey, yeah, thank you very much. Um, motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
I'll make a motion to renew PSBA membership 2020-2021 in the amount of $15,840.42.
Second it.
There you go. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or concerns from board members? I see none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Mrs. Walters? Thumbs up, thank you very much. Okay, motion passes eight zero. And Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept an award finance bid slash RFP results A through K.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or concerns from board members? Seeing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, Mrs. Walters? Give a thumbs up, thank you. Uh, motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the following bank depositories A through F.
Second.
Oh, yours, Bill.
Okay. Um, seconded by Mr. Kraus. Um, questions or concerns from board members? Seeing none, uh, anybody opposed or abstaining? Mrs. Walters, thumbs up, good job, thank you. Motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative purchasing participation for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, items A through I.
Second a motion.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac, was that?
Yes.
Questions or concerns from board members? Seeing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, Mrs. Walters, thumbs up, thank you. Um, motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to seek bids for new school bus replacements for 2020-2021.
Second it.
I'll second that motion, seconded by Mr. Kraus. Um, questions or concerns from board members? I see none, anybody abstaining or opposed? Hearing none, Mrs. Walters? How we doing? Yeah, thank you. All right, motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to review end-of-year payment of all bills received and payable through June 30th, 2020, as necessary. Bill lists will be forwarded to all board members prior to the release of checks. Any checks in question will be resolved before they are released for payment.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or concerns from board members? Anybody opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, Mrs. Walters? Thank you. Motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve settlement agreement relating to litigation captioned as Goodwin versus Penridge School District, Jacqueline Radigan, and Gina DeBona, case number 17-CV-02431 in the United States Federal Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, as well as a motion to approve the settlement agreement relating to litigation captioned as Jane Doe versus Penridge School District, Jacqueline Radigan, and Gina DeBona, case number 17-CV-3570 in the United States Federal Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania.
A second.
Seconded by Dr. Thompson. Question, work, concerns, board members? Hearing none, anybody opposed or abstaining? Mrs. Walters? Thank you. Motion passes eight zero.
Mr. Kraus, may I make a statement regarding those settlements?
Yes, you may, Dr. Bolton, please.
The Penridge School District and the National Women's Law Center has agreed to settle two lawsuits- has agreed to settle two lawsuits that are on the board motions this evening. These litigation matters involve allegations that the district and former administrators failed to adequately address former students' reports of sexual harassment, including sexual assault and dating violence, and failed to train school employees on how to properly respond to sexual harassment. Please see Goodwin versus Penridge School District, Jacqueline Radigan, and Gina Debona, as well as Jane Doe versus Penridge School District, Jacqueline Radigan, and Gina Debona. While the district has denied liability in both cases, the district has worked together with the National Women's Law Center to bring resolution to these matters and to ensure that appropriate actions are being taken, including by providing regular education and training on harassment and bullying for both staff and students. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. Mrs. Venus Clemmons, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for August 10th.
Very much. Personnel, Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I'll make a motion to approve contracts A through D, Independence Blue Cross renewal contract, the Delta Dental renewal contract, the Penridge Stop Loss renewal contract, and the Safe Schools contract.
Second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or concerns from board members? Seeing none. Anybody opposed or abstaining? Mrs. Walters? Thank you. Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment to the Flexible Benefits Plan.
Okay. I'll second that. Seconded by Mr. Kraus. Questions or concerns from board members? Anybody opposed or abstaining? Seeing none. Mrs. Walters? Okay, thank you. Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, the next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 3rd.
Thank you very much. IU, Mrs. Venus Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I'll share a report from our last IU meeting. Believe it or not, we still have so much going on. It was still difficult to narrow down what to share tonight. First, we'll start with the continuity of education through the PAIU. Andrew Coonrad, Teaching and Learning Specialist, led an effort on behalf of PAIU in concert with PDE to create a continuity of education document that has been used statewide to support districts as they transitioned to providing planned instruction. Andrew also supported many districts in consulting and reviewing their continuity of education plans. Also, with the need to pivot to online learning, many Programs and Services team members have been recording WebEx how-to videos and supporting the implementation of CSOW through the first few weeks of online learning. The team has enjoyed collaborating with new colleagues across the IU and counts that as one of the silver linings in this pandemic. The Programs and Services Division oversees multiple advisory councils throughout the school year. These councils help to guide the intermediate units' decision-making in key areas. They have been an essential tool for districts across the county to meet and share ideas, especially concerning the navigation of this crisis. There are groups for all superintendents, assistant superintendents, and curriculum directors, and high school principals, to name just a few. Graduation and grading have obviously been two hot topics at the high school level, but it's definitely helpful for all of those groups to meet together and discuss all of those things to be on the same page and help each other and share ideas. Our STEAM mobile FabLab is obviously not not mobile right now. But the Bucks County IU is still figuring out ways to bring STEAM to kids. The Bucks County IU team is purchasing Kiwi crates for students to use for some fun STEAM activities at homeless shelters over the summer since face-to-face instruction will not be possible. The mobile FabLab team has also been publishing free STEAM energizers every day since Monday, March 16th. STEAM energizers are based off of Scholastic Education's Free Learning at Home resources, which are a collection of nonfiction articles that are perfect for at-home learning. Each energizer focuses on one theme, such as chocolate, roller coasters, or springtime. Each listing offers no and low-tech options, allowing for more students to give these a try by utilizing items commonly and easily found at home. All of these can be, all of those activities can all be accessed on the IU's website. The, for the second year in a row, Robin Gross, the Bucks County IU Educational Marketing Lead, has won a top award for her work for the Bucks County IU. The Pennsylvania Schools Public Relations Association holds an annual contest for everything from graphic design to social media and print publications. Last year, Robin won the top award of excellence for the website. This year, she won a top award of excellence for her design of the mobile Fab logo. The United Way of Bucks County and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit are teaming up to move Bucks County's annual iSTEAM conference for students online. iSTEAM, which is organized by Dr. Lindsay Sides, connects Bucks County 7th and 8th graders to mentors who work in science, technology, engineering, arts, math, and manufacturing, and is the biggest student conference in Bucks County. Over 800 students typically attend. This year, it will be hosted online on May 21st, 2020, starting at 9:30 a.m. Students can register and access the program, which will be about an hour, via a private link available through their science teacher. Miss America 2020, Camille Schreier, a Bucks County native who made history when she presented a chemistry demonstration as her talent during the Miss America competition, will be presenting. She is a biochemist pursuing a doctor of pharmacy degree at Virginia Commonwealth University. In addition to sharing live science demonstrations, Schreier will talk about the importance of STEM education and answer questions submitted by students. Every school that participates will be in a raffle to win $5,000 to put towards their school's STEM education or a one-week residency of the mobile FabLab at their school. These prizes were made possible by generous sponsors, including Pico, Comcast, Langin Engineering, Penn Community Bank, PP&amp;L Electric Utilities, Solvay, Suez Water Technologies and Solutions, and UGI Electric Utilities. Also pleased to announce that our own Dr. Mark Hoffman, Executive Director for the Bucks County IU, will be the new president-elect for the PAIU Board of Directors effective July 1st. So congratulations to him and to us for having him there as that voice. Students in residential and detention facilities are also receiving instruction through WebEx and CSOW. Students who are working towards earning credits in specific course areas and towards gaining mastery with specific learning and behavioral goals are able to receive continuity of instruction to be successful at meeting their goals. Judy Hodnett, a captionist in our hearing support program and an accomplished seamstress, started production of masks with a clear panel in the front to assist those who are hearing impaired and need to watch your mouth movements to interpret what you're saying. Judy is making these with materials that she has on hand. Work is underway to also develop a protocol for sharing with families of our children with hearing loss. Judy is happy to share the pattern she developed with other crafty folks should a larger need develop. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit has district support teams to work with districts on their individual needs. So every year, those needs are identified and shared from each district. This year at Penridge, they facilitated a technology PQR, which is a Program Quality Review, conducted paraprofessional trainings, hosted K-12 Counseling Plan trainings to support the development of a revised plan, and provided Pennsylvania Institute for Instructional Coaching monthly network meetings. The Bucks IU also provided CDT implementation support and consultation on the Act 45 application process. The next Bucks County Intermediate Unit meeting is actually tomorrow evening. So feel free to join us and that is, that meeting is held via WebEx and the link to that is provided on the IU's website.
Thank you, Mrs. Venus Clemmons. The Upper Bucks Votech. Miss Dolan is absent from the meeting, so I will continue on this. The next Upper Bucks Votech Board Meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 18th. On, moving on to, is there any old business, board members, any old business? Is there any new business?
I have new business, please.
Then, Mrs. Cullen?
I would like to speak, and if my computer goes wacky, I'd rather use the computer than the phone. But if I'm wobbly, please just raise a hand and I'll pick up my phone and use it instead. What I'm going to say is going to sound pretty much exactly what I said in my email. I know that it was described as a canned response, but it's going to sound the same because this is my position that I have. I believe that injustices of any kind should be confronted and dealt with appropriately. In my role as a school board director, I am committed to help make sure that every Penridge student is loved, valued, respected, empowered, protected, and heard. I would never and have never suggested that discrimination based on race, sex, gender orientation, and religion doesn't exist in this world, although it would be wonderful if it didn't. However, speaking specifically to the topic of systemic discrimination, there are vastly different views held by people from all walks of life which don't fit neatly into preconceived notions people might hold. It's one thing to say that discrimination exists, but to say that an entire country or community is systemically racist is a different thing altogether. And there are many people, even in minority communities, who are speaking to that right now and providing research to support it, including the gentleman whose tweet I shared, and many others in other underrepresented communities of all kinds who have different views. What they're expressing isn't hateful. It's their own beliefs and experiences as members of those communities, and their perspectives are valid, as are mine and everyone else's in this community. Because no group of people is a monolith that must speak, think, and feel in a uniform way. I've developed my viewpoints on life through my own personal relationships and experiences, as well as through research and reading and listening to the thoughts of a diverse group of people. I'd be happy to share those sources with those who are interested in hearing different perspectives. It has been enlightening for me, and I think every one of those voices deserves to be heard in any discussion that is to be had. I hope you would agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Is there any other new business for the board? Okay, Mr. Miller, Dr. Bolton, is there anything you would like to add before I open that up for public comment?
No, other than a reminder to everyone that public comment, the second period of public comment is still governed by rule Policy 903. For anybody who wants to comment, we will continue to keep time and ask everyone to make their comments as brief as reasonably possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. And with that, I will open it up to public comment and ask if you would like to make a public comment to unmute your microphone, and I will recognize you, please.
I have public comment.
So, Lars iPhone, please state your name and municipality.
Okay. My name is Lars Schroy, and I'm in Hilltown Township. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Anyway. So, in regards to the going back to school, I just wanted to reference some science that I've been reading in regards to COVID-19. I read a PubMed article that said asymptomatic exposed to 455 different people, and there was zero transmission rate. I also read a, excuse me, a ScienceMag article from the American Association for Advancement of Science, and it was a study that was claiming coronavirus can be transmitted by people without symptoms. It was flawed. I will try to summarize. Anthony Fauci said there's no doubt, after reading a paper from the New England Journal of Medicine, that asymptomatic transmission is occurring. But after they followed up with the actual person that they were talking about, during her stay, they said during her stay she had no sign or symptoms of infection and had become ill on her flight back to China. However, after speaking with the woman who had infected four people in Germany, they found out that she did in fact have symptoms. She felt tired, suffered from muscle pain, and was taking Paracetamol, a fever-lowering medication, as well as another article that I read from the American Institute for Economic Research by a statistician, Knut Witschowski. He said, "With all respiratory diseases, the only thing that stops the disease is herd immunity." About 80% of people need to have had contact with the virus, and the majority of them won't have recognized that they were infected or they had very, very mild symptoms, especially if they are children. So it's important to keep the schools open and kids mingling to spread the virus to get herd immunity as fast as possible. Then the elderly people who should be separated in nursing homes should be closed during that time and can come back and meet their children and grandchildren after about four weeks when the virus has been exterminated. So again, I support dual option, and if that does not happen and my child cannot return to school as normal, they will be pulled and we will be moving our money from the district to cyber school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I have a comment.
Hey, Ms. King?
Hi, Adrian King, Hilltown Township. So first, I think I'll start with a thank you to the board. I think that, you know, you've taught me as a parent that I have to be just as engaged with my children's learning and what's going on with the school board as I do with my everyday job. But, so I appreciate that. I'm happy to hear that finally, you know, I came to the board first in February asking about the diversity and equity plan for the district, and it's taken until June for me to get what you provided today, which, you know, was a surface response, but it's a start. What I would, what I would like to understand more of, when you, typically, when you call something a workforce or a task force, it's something that's for a short period of time. So I'd like to understand what the long-term plan is. Is there a plan, like a longer-term solution, such as adding a diversity and inclusion role to the administration or to the board that's going to continue to keep this moving? This is not just something that's in vogue and a hot topic for someone that said that for people of color. It's something that we live with every day. I am now a parent, myself and my husband, that have an eight and a seven-year-old, and we have to reinforce daily that they do not look like a monkey, that they are not dirt, and that their life has value because of what they've experienced in this district. And it is your responsibility to make sure that we shouldn't have to do that. And so I want to make sure that there is a long-term plan to keep this up and that you're not just being reactive to what's popular right now. Because the tone-deaf responses that we've been getting from this board shows that you have blind spots that you need to fill by making sure that your board is more diverse and has more diverse voices around the table. I wish that my only concern as a parent in this district was around keeping the taxes low. It goes so much further beyond that and that we need to really focus on what is good for our children and making sure that they are really equipped and well-rounded for the future that they are going into. And not just for our children, but for all children within the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King.
I have a public comment.
Michelle, please. Give us your name.
Um, Michelle, I'm an alumni of Penridge in 2014. I don't live in the area anymore, but I'm very interested to hear what resources and what research Mrs. Cullen has done to come to the conclusion that systematic racism doesn't exist. I'd love to get those resources and take them down.
You don't live here. Get off.
Oh. Um, excuse me, I'm an alumni of Penridge, and I'm still active in the community because I care about that community. It's where I grew up, so.
Here, you don't pay taxes.
Mr. Miller, would you please mute the I V D G?
Yes, please.
Um, Michelle, we apologize if you was, go ahead, finish your comment.
Comment, please.
Yeah, Mrs. Cullen had said that she would be willing to give those resources, so I would, I'm very interested to hear what they are.
Could you send your contact information to Dr. Bolton? And we'll see if we can get that to you.
Sure. How do I do that?
Dr. Bolton's email.
On the screen, Michelle. We're all first name, first initial, last name at penridge.org. We're all first name, first initial, last name at Penridge.org. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments?
I have a comment. Lindsay McNair from Hilltown Township. Good evening. So just very briefly on this one specific topic, you know, I have two young kids that are in elementary school, and one of my concerns going back in the fall is if we're fortunate enough to have kids actually in classrooms with their teachers, is there the possibility of a requirement of masks? I'm wearing them at work for eight hours, and we have air conditioning, and it's very, very difficult. And I do have concerns about having the kids go back and then having to wear them, especially since many of them are elementary schools, at least our school, we don't have air conditioning. So I just can't imagine that being a possibility, and I am concerned about it. I know there's a lot of other things going on in the world that are also, you know, certainly problematic, but this one particular issue, perhaps because we, everywhere we go, we have to wear masks now, just every day, it just, you know, it is something that I do worry about with, with young kids. So that's just something that, you know, I'm curious to see how you're going to respond to that, and it is my hope that we'll be able to work something out where it's not, it's more optional, and it's not mandatory for at least elementary school kids. So that's all I have.
Thank you for your comment. Other comments?
I have a comment, Dr. Kraus.
Yes, your full name and municipality?
Yes, sir. My name is Andrea Kaya, and I'm from West Rock Hill Township, live in Sellersville. I was also a 2014 graduate and Penridge, Penridge High School alumni, and first and foremost, I would like to, you know, demand the respect and, you know, hopefully apologetic attitude towards Michelle. You know, she does not live in this community right now, however, she is an active member, and she, this causes very near and dear to her heart, and I personally had classes with her, and again, graduated with her. So we have kept this forum completely respectful, and the disrespect that she had gotten was absolutely unacceptable. And Mrs. Cullen, I speak directly to you right now. We have seen you for the first hour and a half be on your phone, not look at your monitor, in direct concerns to the, you know, the concerns of the public, and, you know, ironically, you got on, you know, you were able to, you know, respond and speak through your monitor for the last, what was it, 20 minutes. There are more concerns than air conditioning and, you know, the coronavirus going on right now in terms of the safety of students' well-being and emotional well-being of this district that has been going on for two to three generations. And right now, I would like to pass the platform up to my esteemed colleague right here, because he also has some thoughts that I believe that will really help this entire district improve, so.
Everybody, I want to say, Joan, I agree with you.
You will get closer to the microphone, sir.
Apologies. Can you hear me better now?
Okay.
I want to say first and foremost that I agree with Joan, that free speech is very important, and that understanding that our children know that they can speak their minds freely is very important as well. But as parents, one thing we should also do is let those children know that consequences come with free speech that isn't acceptable. Consequences come with free speech that is rude, disrespectful, dehumanizing too many people within the community itself. I wanted to speak earlier, and I was really patient because I wanted to hear Joan's response to the other people of the community here, and seeing as the response was purely, hey, my opinion can be what it wants to be. As an educator and as somebody who has influence over the curriculum of children, your opinion doesn't really matter to that regard. Your job and your sole purpose in this community, in this committee, is to work with your community. And if your community feels that that is not a view that you should have, and that is a view that they do not want their children to experience, then that is something that you must acknowledge. And so maybe you won't step down from the board, but something that you should do is really retract all of those words, also pass out those sources that you are quoting, so that people can actually have open and honest conversation with you about why you're incorrect about those things. Because these are things that the children that you guide and the children that you were creating the curriculum for will have to undoubtedly learn, and if there's an implicit bias on how they're going to learn what their community has gone through, and that's going to be directly impactful to what their view of, of the world is, because it will be unrealistic as they go through those processes. Thank you.
Excuse me for just one second. I'd like to interrupt you. I just, at the end of the day, all I ask of not only you, Mrs. Cullen, but all of the board members, is to create a more transparent operation. You know, for us as a community, we would very much like more transparency from all aspects. We just went through half an hour of things, of contracts, agreements of eight to zero agreements of, you know, things that we don't know, and we have to dig and dig and dig to understand what those things mean. It would be a great community initiative for you all to keep that trend, or just to start the transparency of keeping all of us involved, and that is our job as citizens to remain active on the public school board. However, we also ask that you do the same.
And I just.
Mr. President, I just want to remind all the speakers, we've been pretty, we've given a great deal of latitude. Again, Policy 903 requires everyone to address the chair and not individual members of the board. I believe Ms. Cullen has been addressed several times, and of course, she has not objected, and we have tried to provide that latitude, but again, board policy requires all statements to be made to the chair. I just want to remind everyone that as parliamentarian. Thank you.
And may I just say something? I have had, and I still have, my phone on, my computer on, and I have been trying to switch to the most reliable Wi-Fi that I could have, and I did that throughout the meeting. That's why you've seen me looking down at my phone, I've been taking notes on what people have said. So I just want to address that, that what you're seeing isn't necessarily what you perceive, and I've had to listen to that a couple of times now, tonight, that I'm rude and disrespectful, and I don't think that that's a fair statement, and I would just like to, to say that. Thank you.
So in regards to the information for the board meeting, that information is posted on the district website, you can, you can reach it generally three days before the meeting. So the information for tonight's meeting was posted on Friday. So you can get to the information right from the district website. So thank you for those comments. Anybody else would like to make a comment?
I'd like to speak.
Okay, Ms. Remy, is it?
Renee.
Renee, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Katie Renee Percasie-Burrell. Is my audio okay? I tend to echo in this space.
No, your audio is fine.
Thank you. Two peaceful protests were recently held in Percasie in response to the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery. It was moving to see hundreds of people from our community come together to send a clear message that Black Lives Matter. I hope some of you were there to hear the stories of Penridge School District students and families, past and present, who have experienced racism in our schools. If you were not, it was truly a missed opportunity. After hearing about children who are regularly called hateful names by their peers, teachers and coaches who act unconscious or unconscious bias, and administrators who ignore requests for help and fair treatment from Black and Brown families in Penridge, I believe the district must take immediate action. Love, commitment, wisdom, compassion, these are all words used in the email sent to the district by Dr. Bolton and Mr. Kraus as suggestions for how we should react to incidents of injustice. If that's the case, I have to ask, where is the love from Penridge for a child who is called dirt or worse because of her skin color while riding the bus to school? Where is the commitment to regular diversity education and training in Penridge for students, teachers, and staff? Where is the wisdom in having a curriculum committee chair who flatly denies the existence of systemic racism? Where is the compassion for the students and families in Penridge who have to repeat themselves time and again about unfair treatment and who are left to handle incidents of racism or bias without the support of our administration? I am a Penridge graduate, taxpayer, and parent. I, along with hundreds of others, stand at the ready to support the district with the implementation of an anti-racist education. I believe that Black Lives Matter, and I think it would go a long way to hear the same statement without qualification from Dr. Bolton and the members of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others who would like to make a comment?
I'd like to speak.
Steven, please give us your full name and municipality.
My name is Steven Chueny. I live in Percasie-Burrell. I have three children who are part of the Penridge School District. I am not a Penridge alumni. I moved to this area from a southern state, south of Mason-Dixon line, with the promise that the Penridge School District would provide an equal-to-or-better education than the school district in which I grew up. Shortly after moving to this area five years ago, I was given pause due to the regularity with which I saw prideful displays of the Confederate flag. It is, there is zero question in my mind that Penridge should take a strong stance against display of the Confederate flag. That should be banned across the board. This is not a matter of history, not hate, this is hate outright. Furthermore, the presence of racism needs to be acknowledged. I was floored when I attended the peaceful protest and learned of how recent outright racism is shown in the school district, and it is nothing short of, it just generated outrage in me that is unspeakable. We need to do better. We owe it to our children, we owe it to our community, we owe it to ourselves. This community is, is, just absolutely deserves better, and direct action needs to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who would like to make a public comment?
I would like to make a comment.
Hey, Ms. Smith.
Um, I just want to say, we are currently living in this incredible moment in time where we have this pandemic, we have our, the economic crisis, and, and on top of all of that, there was that death of George Floyd, and that just brought all of this unspoken racial tension to the surface. And now I feel like we're standing at a crossroads, and now is the time to do something. And when Mrs. Cullen tweets things like, "There's no such thing as systemic racism," I, I get upset. We're at this crossroads, we can do something now, and I'm calling on Joan to resign. Her comments have done irreparable damage to our community, and I don't think we can move past it until she is no longer on the board. I have many concerns about her picking curriculum for my children, and I feel as though, you know, racism is certainly not a fad, this is something that's been happening forever, and we need to address it, we need to address it head-on, and possibly increase our, the diversity group that you have working, we need to do many things as we possibly can to make sure everyone in our community feels as safe and secure as possible at school. They should never be called, the kids should never be called anything, any racial slurs or anything negative at school, that's just, it's a terrible, terrible thing that I hear happening. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Other comments? Mrs. Herring, I see you're unmuted.
Yes, sir. Diane Herring, Hilltown Township. I don't know if you can hear me.
You're a little crackly. I don't know what, if you're too close or too far, I can't tell.
Too close, too far, I don't know. I'd like to address this evening. I've sat here and listened to everyone. I've attended board meetings for over 10 years. I'm very impressed with the amount of people who've chosen to speak this evening. Normally, that does not happen. I am, however, concerned about generalities. We are discussing the school district. We are not discussing people's homes. We are not discussing what they are actually raised in. You can institute a curriculum change in any area. You cannot change what children come to school with or how they go home. You can teach history. You can give them knowledge. You cannot change a culture by education, assuming that the educational environment is simply going to be their parent. I applaud everyone, but the situation is much bigger. It has to come from outside and inside. And I just hope that everyone tonight who has an opinion continues to have that opinion, but bring it inside and outside of school. Have conversations with people. Come to meetings. Board meetings don't accomplish anything. They don't. They're here to vote for on things that are already voted on and discussed at committee meeting. If you want to make an impactful change, show up to every single committee meeting. This isn't anything new, this is the way it's been done for decades. If you believe in it, make it your mission. It took me eight years to effect change in one thing in this district. Eight years to get Jews to be able to have off Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. But I went to every committee meeting, I went to every calendar meeting, I spoke to every board director inside and out of the boardroom. If you want to affect change, you have to make it a mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Herring. Other comments?
I have a comment.
All right, Mr. King?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just, I'm Dante King. I'm in Hilltown Township. I have two daughters in the district. Thank you for allowing me to speak, but also I just want to thank the young lady that just spoke, and she had mentioned something that really just struck a chord with me. She said it took her eight years, eight years to get one or two days changed, when that day has been reserved in, in other school districts, many bigger school districts and smaller school districts, you know, even banks, you know, some banks recognize it. So the fact that it took eight years for this board, the school board, to recognize that, it's a little bit horrible, right? That sounds a little bit, and also sounds like it's also reactive. My wife spoke earlier about us reaching out to the school board in February. We had a meeting with, with members of the school board and, and Dr. Bolton, and we had, we had a meeting with you less than a month ago when we asked a similar question. Nothing came of that. So here it is today that over 170 people joined this call, the community, whether it be to talk about COVID, whether to be to talk about racism, whether it be to talk about members of the school board. The community is here, and they're speaking to you. And we got a response today, again, it was very surface, very disappointing, but it was very surface, and I'll take it as a start. But when are we going to see real action? When are we going to stop being reactive to a situation and start being proactive? You know, this, if I'm not mistaken, everybody keeps mentioning a comment that a school board member made. That wasn't recent, it was, it was a while ago, right? So why, but why are we being reactive to it? It should have been dealt with when it was, when it was released. So I employ the school board, whether it's helping to deal with a situation with a school, with, with a board member, whether it's dealing with this, whether it's dealing with holidays, whether it's dealing with COVID. You know, our school, I understand you want to, to measure twice and cut once, I get that, but you're measuring 20 times and still not cutting. So I need you all to act a little bit more, to act a little bit more quicker. We've heard, we've heard testimonies from children that have, that We've heard testimonies from children that alumni that have graduated in the 90s and mentioned that they had issues. It is 2020. My daughter's in the second grade. I would love to see her not, I would love to see a curriculum change. I would love to see a diversity board, not just, again, a task force. Because when I hear the word "task force," look it up. Temporary team to solve a particular problem. And the young lady is right. They've spoken before me. We can't just change it here. But guess what? It has to be a start here and it can't be a temporary team. It needs to be something that is woven into the fibers of the school board, of this district. So that when, you may not be able to control what the student comes in with, but you know what? You can control what they go out with. And it has to start at a younger age because by the time they get to high school, it's a little bit harder to fill that bucket. But when they're in elementary school, you can fill that bucket. They are sponges. And if the curriculum is not there, if the tone of the school board is not behind, truly behind diversity, if it is a true mission of this school board, your mission and vision need to state that. I want all of you to actually go and look at the statement on the school board and address that.
Mr. King, I'm terribly sorry.
I yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anybody else would like to make a statement or comment?
Yep, I'll go.
Who is, okay, Mr. Hogan?
Yep, thank you again, Joshua Hogan, West Rock Hill Township. You know, despite all the other stuff going on, I just want to thank the board for, again, balancing the budget. Believe me, I'm in touch with the other districts and what's going on. And there is some rough times coming for other members of our community who are in this school district when it comes to their property taxes. And so that is much appreciated, the fiscal responsibility of this board, the whole board. I'd like to reaffirm my support for Joan Cohen. Just say again, the way I said earlier, I found nothing offensive about her tweet. I didn't find it offensive that she tweeted it. I didn't find it offensive that Alan Sutton tweeted it, who was a black man that she retweeted. Coming back to the COVID pandemic, what I want to do is read an excerpt from words that were sent out by the superintendent of Souderton Area School District. "I consider this to be the gold standard of a district's response, and I'm hoping that Penridge will do something similar." So again, these are the words of Frank Gallagher, superintendent of Souderton Area. "While summer has just begun, the start of school in the fall is on the minds of many in our community. We have much work to do to prepare for a safe return to school, and this is where our energy is focused. While the health and safety of our students and staff is paramount, our goal is to get our students and staff back into our schools with as close of a return to normalcy as possible. We also understand we'll need to meet students where they are, assess what they've missed, and pick back up with positivity, care, and optimism. We can't wait to see our students again on the first day of what we hope will be a very positive school year for all. On September 1st, SASD schools will be open and prepared to welcome the return of all students barring any unforeseen closures or restrictions on school instruction. A comprehensive health and safety plan is under development, which will drive our actions and responses to ongoing issues related to the pandemic. I know that parents are eager to learn what returning to school will look like and what modifications to daily routines can be expected. By utilizing guidance from multiple sources and choosing what's best for our school community, we will be opening school with the fewest restrictions on students as possible. SASD's current plan for school reopening does not include a requirement for students to wear masks. We will make classroom and building configuration changes where applicable to promote social distancing and safety without compromising the learning environment or incurring unnecessary spending." Frank P. Gallagher, superintendent of schools. Again, that's available in the superintendent's corner on their website. Thank you."
Thank you. Your comments, Mr. Hogan? Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I would. Stephanie Lomina, Sellersville. I have children that go to Grass Elementary in Central. I just think it's really important to note, it's been mentioned a few times, how many people have attended this board meeting tonight. And I think it's clear why we are all here and what we are all trying to accomplish. Clearly, this is a huge issue that has not been addressed in the Penridge School District that needs to be addressed. I work in a district that has been working on enhancing their cultural proficiency for 13 years. We have been working on it for 13 years. I have been on the committee. I have trained teachers. I have done the work. I have read books. I have educated myself, my students, and my peers. 13 years we've been working on it. Penridge has not done enough. Penridge needs to start immediately. They need to get committees. Other people had mentioned it needs to be a long-term committee. This is not something that is going away. This is something that needs to be dealt with. You need to create committees and you need to hold people accountable. You need to hold teachers. You need to hold parents. You need to hold administrators and board members accountable. I would volunteer my time. I would volunteer my services to be on one of those committees. But you guys are called upon to make this happen and to make it happen immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Jennifer, would you like to make a comment?
I do, and it's totally off topic of everything that's been discussed tonight. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the entire school district for making what was, actually, I should say what my name is. I'm Jennifer Glenn Denning. I'm from Hilltown Township. I have a son who was a 2018 graduate and a daughter who was just a 2020 graduate. And I just wanted to express my heartfelt thanks to the school district for making something that we thought we weren't going to have anything for these kids for graduation and ended up being actually kind of almost better than what a normal graduation would be in the sense that it was a way that the community came together and supported these kids. And you did more than what other school districts had done. And I really just wanted to thank Dr. Bolton and Dr. Cashman and the rest of the faculty for really doing a spectacular job in making this a great thing for these kids. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn Denning. Anybody else would like to make a comment?
I'd like to make a public comment.
Hi, Ally, please give us your.
My name is Ally Thompson. I am from Sellersville. I'm a 2011 Penridge graduate. I moved out of the area within the last couple of months. But I just want to echo a lot of the sentiments that have been stated tonight, that Penridge is backwards. It is behind in what any type of credible high school, middle school, elementary school education system curriculum should be doing. I'm actually appalled that in almost 10 years, things haven't changed. Things are possibly getting worse in terms of the curriculum in educating on systemic racism. And while I think there's a lot of progress in terms of recognizing holidays and opening voices up to the community, it should not take this long. And the district is really far behind a lot of other places within the entire country.
Thank you. Your comment? Anybody else would like to make a public comment?
My name's Charles.
All right, Charles?
I graduated from Penridge in 1994. My children go there now. I realize that there is a tolerance on bullying in this school, but I think something has to happen when it comes to race and when kids call brown kids the N-word. I think if you treat it just like bullying, because it has to stop. It is bullying. I just sat, I just, I grew up here. I just sat through a public speaking where a lot of people who went to our school, you know, recalled that. It didn't make me proud at all. I think that's energy to do something and to see that bullying. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else like to make a public comment? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, with that, I'll move on to announcements. An executive session was held on June 8th, 2020 to discuss a legal matter and following tonight's board meeting to discuss a personnel matter. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 24th, 2020. Thank you all very much and good night.
Mr. Kraus, I just want to remind board members that we do have an executive session. You were sent a separate link. I'm going to suggest that we take a nine-minute break and we gather at 9:40 on the second link. Again, see you at 9:40. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Good night all.
Good night.